We'll now begin the City Council's study session. Again, Vice Mayor Freeman is excused. The first item on the agenda is to review the items for the December 9th council meeting agenda. So please refer to that document. Currently, we have a couple of items off the consent agenda. Or we anticipate there will be. Yes, Mr. Thompson.
Just a real quick question. Carry on. For D, two-year renewal option for streetlight parts, are we, as our streetlights are either knocked down or otherwise we're repairing them, are we going with LEDs?
LEDs, yeah.
So are these, so all these parts are the LEDs?
Yeah, if it's a complete, if it's just the, I probably have to have, if it's, if it's just the, it's not the pole and so forth, we're still just replacing the light bulb, but if it's a rusted pole, or if it's been knocked down, they're totally going to LED lights.
So the parts in 4D that we're buying are for LED for new streetlights?
Mayor, Councilman Thompson, they're not all LED. We're still buying high-pressure sodium bulbs. In overly simplistic terms, anything more than a bulb, we're probably going to take the fixture down and put up an LED, but this would also include fuses and that sort of thing. But Carrie's correct. Once we go into a neighborhood, if it's a rusted pole replacement, knockdown, you know, anything of that, we're just transitioning to LED. Once the stuff starts to break down inside the existing fixture, it's just not worth repairing anymore.
All right. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we weren't buying two years' worth of equipment that eventually we weren't going to need anymore. So, okay, perfect. Thank you.
Quick question for you, RJ. I have noticed some new, that was a nice pirouette, the folks in the, for those not on television, maybe we can recreate that.
It's those ballet skills that I learned as a child.
Nice job. I have noticed LED light poles as I'm just driving around town, but they seem to be attached to the next-gen Verizon and the...
The small cell.
Small cell, thank you. And so, to what extent have we seen that deployment occurring in the city? And this is a little off-topic, but...
Mayor, I'm going to ask, yeah.
That has to come up.
I've noticed several of them, and I noticed that they have the new light bulb, but sometimes I'll see one pole immediately adjacent to an older pole, and I assume at some point we're taking the older pole down.
That's correct. So Beth's staff actually manage the permitting process for small cell, and then our staff go out and inspect to make sure that the installation was done correctly.
Mayor, Council, I don't have the exact numbers with you. We are, we have quite a stack of permits that have come through and been approved throughout the city right now. I can get you an update with the exact numbers, and we have a map that shows all the locations of those as well. I just don't have it with me this morning.
What you'll see happening, Mayor, is that the poles with the small cell antenna are stouter, so they actually have to put up a new pole, and we try not to take down the old streetlight until the new streetlight is up.
Yes, that is correct. They do have to replace the entire pole when they come in to mount the antenna.
I think it would be useful for all of us just to get an update on the 5G rollout. And I mean, I know we've been talking about this for the last year or two, and to see them actually going up, I was, I thought that was very interesting.
It has.
Yeah.
It took about, almost a year after the legislation passed for them to start getting permits in and selecting locations in sight. We do anticipate, we may be coming back with some changes to the fee schedule. They are asking us to add some fees, to do some additional things to assist them in locating the poles and to getting them designed appropriately. So some of the other cities have added fees for that. We're looking at that now and evaluating whether we want to proceed with that, so, as well, but...
Thank you very much. Yes, Mr. Luna.
I was wondering if we can get Mark to speak on 4O. Mark Hirschberg? There he is. You remember that, right, Mark?
Yes.
Yeah.
Mayor, Councilmembers, Jefferson Park Playground Replacement. This is a project we're utilizing both, a couple of funding sources, CDBG funds, as well as working with Dave Bang, who's a local playground representative, represents Playworld as well as some other manufacturers. They're working with us to make a Dave Bang Memorial Playground out there as well, to honor Dave and his passing about a year and a half ago this time. So working with their vendors to get some, a number of items donated as well, so should be a great enhancement to the park and the community.
Great. Thank you for doing that. That park is, the playground equipment is dated and it needed to be refurbished, and certainly that community welcomes having new equipment there for, for the children to play on, so thank you for that.
Yeah, absolutely. That's something we've talked about for a number of years, so happy to see it going in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Council, any other questions on items on the agenda? On the agenda for Monday, we do have a hearing on the vaping, the addition of vaping to the smoking ordinance, and we, there's an individual that is here this morning. I know when we talked about this a few days ago, we said we're going to have this, this hearing, and we invited folks from the industry and from any other advocacy organizations that wanted to speak, to come and participate. So I appreciate Amanda Wheeler coming today. Amanda, you certainly, we're more than happy to have you share your thoughts with us this morning. The hearing is actually Monday, but you could, you could take some time today and Monday, whatever, whatever you'd like.
Yeah, if I could this morning, I won't be available.
Absolutely, yes. If you're not available Monday, then that's, I'm glad you're here today. Please come up and have a seat. So this is Agenda Item 6C, and again, just to set the stage, the proposal is to add e-cigarettes and vaping to the, treating, regulating them the same way we do second-hand tobacco smoke. But, so thank you for being here. Please tell us who you represent and share with us whatever you'd like to, for us to know.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmembers, for allowing me time to speak this morning. My name is Amanda Wheeler. I'm the Executive Director of the Arizona Smoke Free Business Alliance. We represent all of the local small business owners in the vaping industry, primarily local vape shops. We have five member businesses here in Mesa, two of which have their corporate headquarters here in Mesa. Our concern primarily is with the exemption in the ordinance for vape shops and the ventilation clause required by that. You know, we certainly recognize and applaud Council's intention with this bill. We just have a concern on how it's going to impact small businesses with that ventilation requirement. All of our members here in Mesa have been in the same locations for the better part of a decade. They're all primarily in shopping, strip center-type situations where there is common ventilation. The cost of installing the ventilation required in the ordinance would be a burden on these very small businesses, as well as not necess, we don't necessarily know if the landlords would even allow the businesses to make those kinds of changes to the structure. One of the reasons why it's important that vape shops be allowed to have vaping on the premises is we work a lot with our customers on product safety, instructing them how to properly use devices, letting them try different things to see what would work best for them to help them quit smoking combustible cigarettes. I have two studies that I printed out. One was a study done by the CDC, and another one is from the Journal of Environment and Public Health. Both of these studies, one in 2015 and one in 2017, tested the air quality inside retail vape shops where vaping was taking place in the normal course of business by employees, customers. They took those air samples from the shop and analyzed them for any harmful aerosols. And what both of those studies found is that the air samples from vape shops showed no more levels of chemicals higher than standard occupational safety levels that you would find in any standard workplace. They didn't find any significant difference between the air quality in a vape shop versus anywhere else. I brought copies of both of those studies that I would be happy to share with the Council, and so we would just respectfully request that a change to that exception be made, dropping that ventilation requirement, because this would create a serious problem with businesses probably having to relocate outside of Mesa, or, you know, change, make major changes like that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Yes, thank you. We'd love to get those articles. Mr. Thompson?
Amanda, don't worry. In the email that you sent, I don't know if you sent it to all of Council, but I certainly got it. You had talked about how you'd worked with other communities throughout Arizona to ensure that the children were safe, when you helped develop regulation and ordinances with other cities. Can you talk about, because I know that's a concern of this Council, is making sure that, that our youth are kept safe when it comes to vaping? So can you talk a little bit about that, what you've done in the past?
Yes, our Councilmember, Thompson. I also run our state organization in Colorado, so I've worked with dozens of municipalities, both in Colorado and Arizona. Here in Arizona, we've worked with Tucson, Flagstaff, other locations throughout the state. We also sponsored legislation at the State Capitol to prevent youth use. There are a number of things that we are supportive of. We're supportive of raising the age to 21 at the state level. We're supportive of licensing the businesses and imposing strict fines for any businesses that sell to minors. Very practical approaches like that, things that we think can curb the youth use. We certainly don't want any of our products in the hands of children.
Okay. Well, this is food for thought. Thank you. If you're not available to come Monday, I'm glad that you took advantage of the opportunity to come today. I understand the, I was on our council back in 1996 when we adopted the ordinance, the smoke-free ordinance for tobacco. And so I remember this issue being one that was, we struggled with, with regard to tobacco shops at the time. So I, it was kind of off my radar, but we'll, we'll give this consideration and hopefully between now and Monday have to come back with some ideas.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
You bet. Jen?
One question. Do you know if there's any filters or filtration devices that you can put on your, you know, air intake that, you know, limits, you know, the shared intake of, from the air going into the ship, you know, other shared air?
Right. That's, that's a great question. Unfortunately, that's outside of my area of expertise, but I could certainly make some calls and look into that and get back to you about it.
It seems like it could be kind of a solution to minimizing the impact, even the smell, you know, on the others.
Yes, ma'am. If there's anything we could do to mitigate that without, you know, and try, having to install a completely new ventilation system, we would certainly be very happy to look at those options.
Thank you.
You know, if the argument is that the carcinogens and the things that we're worried about are present in the vape, as well as in the tobacco smoke, it seems like we shouldn't treat them differently. I do understand the practical problem that you pose for some of your retailers. I wonder if one idea that we could kick around is maybe delaying, we're delaying implementation for six months as it is. So your retailers would have six months to look for new space or negotiate improvements with landlords, but maybe we delay the requirement for the ventilation for vape shops for some additional amount of time in order just to allow them to catch up with the premises issues. Something to think about. Jen?
Are other cities making the same requirement upon shops to have isolated ventilation?
I doubt it.
Do we know?
Not, not in, not in my experience. In the, in the different areas where I've worked on this specific issue, it's not been a requirement.
And so, Mayor, Council, I think we can take this consideration. We try to keep this very simple by essentially including this in the existing...
Right.
...smoke ordinance. So that's why, so maybe it fit for most of it, maybe this is a part that can be carved out or created some exception or hardship. So we'll take a look at it. We try to keep this simple, kind of really piggybacking on the existing ordinance, as the Mayor said, the existing ordinance we've had on the books for a long time and just added vaping to it. But maybe there's, it seemed to follow through most of the time, but maybe in the ventilation part, we can reevaluate that and come back with some ideas on Monday.
Okay. Mr. Thompson?
Well, that was one of the reasons why I asked, or last week, that we tabled this until further discussion, or for further discussion, so that we could work through the nuances and make sure that it's not detrimental and overregulating to our small businesses or through that, that, those sellers or whatever, those venues, but, so, anyway.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, well, yes, Mr. Luna.
So I noticed your study's dated, 2015, yet the CDC says that, that they do, you know, that the vapors do contain harmful chemicals. Can you give us some more current data?
Sure. The, I provided two studies. The one from the CDC that I have is from 2017, and that's where they examined the air quality for those carcinogens related with vapor emissions, and they didn't find any harmful levels in the air.
This is on their website now, that they are harmful.
With the second-hand emissions?
Yes.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not aware of that. All of the studies that I'm aware of that have tested air quality inside vape shops haven't found anything above normal occupational limits, but I'll take a look at that.
Please take a look at it. It's currently on their website now.
Okay.
Then, Mayor and Council, I think we're also hoping to have someone from the county here on Monday, so they, they've been giving briefings to some of the other cities about their studies regarding vaping too, so they'll provide some insight. And maybe they can share with us definitively what other, because I know they've been meeting with other cities, they can talk about some of these topics too.
Okay. Well, let's take 6C off the consent agenda in anticipation of another speaker coming, but also to address the issue that you raised today.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that very much.
All right. Thank you.
Have a good day.
You bet. All right, Council, other questions regarding anything on Monday's agenda?
I do have one question on 4H about the radios for, is it just for fire, I guess? So those radios, am I reading this right? They're about $10,000 each, is that correct? I have no idea. Hi, good morning.
Mayor, Councilmember Duff, members of the Council, yes. Motorola radios are extremely expensive. These are replacement radios...
Right.
...that we have. This is what we use on the fire ground. They have to be fire-ground safe and everything, so these radios, they are costly.
Wow, I had no idea. Wow. Take good care of them.
We do, we do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else on the Monday night agenda? All right. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 2. That's to hear a presentation on the West World War II hangar at Falcon Field Airport, including its history and current utilization, and a proposed master tenant lease with Falcon Warbirds Foundation and the Wings of Flight Foundation. Corinne, welcome.
Let's see, we'll get the slideshow going here. Thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers. Good morning. My name's Corinne Neistrom. I'm the Airport Director here at Falcon Field Airport, and I'm here to visit with you this morning about the master tenant lease for the West World War II hangar that is scheduled to be on the agenda for board, or Council consideration on Monday. Just a little bit of background, as many of you are aware, Falcon Field was opened in 1941 by the US government, and as part of the opening of that airport, there were two hangars that were built to accommodate the use for training of British Royal Air Force and US Army Air Corps pilots during World War II. There were a large number of pilots that were trained at the facility during the war, and as a result, we've developed a rich history of what happened during those years. After the war, like many other airports, the, the federal government came to the city of Mesa, as they did with other municipalities, and we agreed to take on the airport as long as we agreed to operate it as a municipal airport. So it was deeded by the federal government to the city of Mesa, and along with that came the two World War II hangars. Specifically today, we're going to talk about the West one. Since that property was deeded over to the city, the West World War II hangar has been leased to several parties over the years, but the primary use has always been aircraft storage. And we're very, very proud of these two hangars. There aren't very many of them left that are in as good condition as the ones that we have at Falcon Field. And just so everyone is aware, both it and the East World War II hangar are actually listed on the National Register of Historic Places. So the West World War II hangar has been leased and rented to an organization called Falcon Warbirds since 2014. And in the hangar, they are storing their vintage warbird aircraft, but as part of the arrangement with the lease, they have, they agreed to assist the city in helping to educate the community about Falcon Field's rich history during World War II. And one of the ways that they do that is we have a lot of people that want to take tours of the airport, and so we take them down to the West World War II hangar, and the Falcon Warbirds graciously let people into the beautiful hangar and give them a tour along with the tour of their vintage warbird aircraft. So it's worked out extremely well for both the Falcon Warbirds and for the city to have that type of partnership. Now, the lease with them expires at the end of this year, on December 31st, and so we have to be looking to the future. Because this is such a historic and great asset for the city, we would like to be able, as part of Falcon Field's mission, to continue to acknowledge and educate our community about Falcon Field's role during World War II. And so what we, as the staff, city staff, have decided and are proposing is that we set apart and designate one city asset to specifically fulfill this purpose, and that one specific asset would be the West World War II hangar. So what we did is we published a notice of intent to lease, and this is a requirement, Arizona Revised Statutes requires us to do that with any property that we are planning to lease on the airport. And we solicited specifically for proposals from nonprofit organizations who could help us achieve the goal of promoting and educating the community about Falcon Field's history. And our intent was, because there are several warbird groups located on the airport, and it's a very large hangar, was to make that available to two or more nonprofit organizations so that they could work together in partnership with the city. So we received proposals from both the Falcon Warbirds, the current tenants, and Wings of Flight Foundation, which is also currently a tenant on the airport. They're located in a private hangar at this time. Both of these organizations do have vintage warbird aircraft. We have visited with them in their proposals. They agreed that they would be willing to conduct the airport tours, as the Warbirds are currently doing, as well as continue, right now, both organizations do provide tours in their facilities. They also both participate in the annual open house out at Falcon Field, which is a huge event. Our next one is scheduled for March 28th, and they've agreed to continue to participate in that event, as well as any other airport or city-sponsored events that we deem appropriate for them, that would help, help promote the history of Falcon Field and the airport and the city as a whole. So both nonprofit groups would be sharing the 20,000-square-foot hangar, as well as the 6,600-plus square feet of office and maintenance work area. And we're just absolutely delighted to begin this partnership with both of these groups. We do believe that it's going to be a great opportunity for all of us to continue our efforts, especially in educating the younger generations who are not as familiar with what happened during World War II, to help them learn that Falcon Field and the city of Mesa played a huge role during that very important time in our history. And with that, I will be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Corinne. So I like, this is a beautiful building, obviously. For anybody who hasn't been inside, I like the fact that we're setting, there's two of these. One is being leased for market rates, and a company has done a beautiful job of restoring that one, and I like, I like the idea that we're preserving the other one for historical purposes. So I assume that the lease rate for this West hangar is less than market. Is that correct?
Well, actually, it is market rate, but the way that it has been set up is that if they, if the organizations conduct a certain number of events that promote the airport or promote the city of Mesa over a period of 12 months, then we will provide them with a discount on what they owe us by cash, with cash. And this is really advantageous to us as the city, because our marketing resources as the airport are, you know, have a limit, have a budget, and so to be able to draw on these other two organizations to help us to market the airport is actually a great benefit to the city. So we feel that when everything is said and done, we are going to get fair market value for the hangar.
Okay. Great. That answers my question. Mr. Luna?
Thank you, Corinne. This has been something that's near and dear to my heart, working together, bringing these two nonprofits to lease this building. They provide great community support, especially when you go to the Falcon Field Open House, which is March 28th.
March 28th.
March 28th.
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to invite the public to come and see the hangar space.
Yes.
It's a really cool hangar space, and it really acknowledges our history here in the city of Mesa related to the war and the end-of-war effort. So thank you for putting this together and working with both nonprofits, and I think this is something that I would support and move forward on that. And then I also want to acknowledge Councilmember Duff's had a relative, I think, was part of the Royal Air Force that participated, that was included in this. Is that correct?
Yes, my great uncle was instrumental, and he was a historian, and so I have a whole photo book and all this memorabilia of Falcon Field and his days there. His name is Lauren Turner, and Molly Turner, his wife, has contributed quite a bit of the history throughout the years in books and documenting Falcon Field's history. So personally, I really revel in seeing the airport and the city and the nonprofit organizations coming together to recognize the important history of really the development in Mesa as far as in that post-World War II. A lot of, like my family, had stayed after the war, made their home here, and there's all kinds of families and people who are part of our community that originated from that time. And I think it's so rich that we recognize that, bring together the nonprofits, because I worry over the years that especially a lot of the nonprofits, the people who are keeping, you know, keeping that history together are aging, like all of us, and we worry about the longevity, because the culture of our city is what makes us special and that community. Otherwise, we become like any other airport without a story.
Right.
And so I recognize your efforts and thank everybody involved to make this possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Corinne. We'll look forward to visiting the hangar at the next event. The next item on our agenda is Item 3. That's to acknowledge receipt of board minutes. Is there a motion for approve that? Thank you, Mr. Thompson and Mr. Luna. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Next is to hear reports on meetings and conferences attended. We'd like to begin. Mr. Luna?
Yesterday, we had a great meeting with Mexican consulate in Phoenix. We invited a number of City Councilmembers to come and to learn about the consulate service here in the, in the Valley, and it was a great meeting, and there was a lot of enthusiasm, and it was a great learning experience for our many council members throughout the East Valley. So I appreciate our consulate, our consul, Jorge Mendoza. Yes, Gus? And it was a great meeting, and I don't know if Jen wants to add anything.
I attended as well. I thought it was really a rich meeting in which we will carry it forward in our community and how we can strengthen our Hispanic community, further, you know, foster trade, tourism, a lot of things that we can do together when we get close to the community and do the work, instead of feeling like it, those resources are somewhere over in Phoenix or across the country. So we'll be working on that. I appreciate your facilitating that. I, on Tuesday, I believe it was, I attended the MAG, the Maricopa Association of Governments Human Services Conference over in Phoenix. It was very informational, how the ASU Design Theater has vast data resources available to the city. to cities and how we look at cross-platforming that data in order to our, look at our demographics and what we can do as a city, specifically in affordable housing and our mobile home units and utility assistance and things like that. So, I thought it was very beneficial. I also, we attended, I know the mayor attended, as well as me and other council member Thompson, and I know quite a bit of city staff, at the East Valley Partnership Leader Forum. And I thought ASU's presentation about education from pre-K and taking on well-passed college into a lifelong, lifelong learning is building a more resilient city and community and economy. And I thought it was a fascinating look at it from Dr. Crowe. He's always a visionary and glad to have ASU be part of our community.
Thank you. Thank you.
Just yesterday, I toured the 911 and Police Dispatch Center. Fairly impressed. I remember two years ago when I toured it, and, you know, some of the outdated equipment that was there now, you know, them handling over 800,000 calls at that center or more each year. The, you know, gave us a preview of the, how the text to 911 program is handled, you know, it's just very impressive, and all the work that the dispatchers do there. Really commend them being the, you know, literally the first responders to residents' calls into probably the worst day that it's happening there. So, really impressed by the staff that are working there, so.
I just want to say amen to the shouting out or acknowledging the great work of the East Valley Partnership in the meeting last Tuesday. They gave awards to two real great legacy families in the community, the Burge family and the Whitman family, just, and those families reluctantly showed up and allowed us to honor them, but the legacy, the contribution those families have made to this community over the last several decades just can't be adequately acknowledged, so, but I appreciate their efforts in doing that. Also, that night, the mayor's youth committee had a fun event. I wish we could have all been there, but they, we had a mock city council meeting, and we were all represented vicariously during that meeting, and it was, it was a lot of fun. They tackled issues like vaping and recycling and some interesting zoning cases ripped from the pages of our actual agendas. So, thank you to the, to the staff that helped to make that happen. I think it was a very valuable experience for those young people. Anything else, council, you'd like to talk about? If not, Mr. Brady, what does our schedule look like?
Thank you, Mayor. So, Monday, December 9th, we'll have our final council meeting, study session of the year. We will start at 4:30. We have a couple items for study session prior to our council meeting that evening, so.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Mr. Luna and Mr. Thompson. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, we are adjourned.